Meeting tonight, I would call the city council regular meeting August 5th to order, with the invocation given by Tim Allen, Tim Allison, chaplain of the Visine Nurses Association Hospice. Mr. Allison. Mr. Allison's not here. Anybody in from the audience clergy that are here that would like to?
Sure, I will.
Ms. Baker, please, thank you.
Is this for air?
It is.
Okay, I can do that.
We could use them, thank you. Please be standing.
Would you bow your heads, please? Our heavenly father, we thank you for the privilege of being able to come and voice our concerns and our opinions to the people that govern this city. We ask your guidance to help us make the best decisions. We thank you for living in a free America where we can make choices of our own. Guide our political elections as all of our elections should are guided by you. Thank you so much for the privilege to be here, in Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Fears.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember McCandless.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Councilmember members Vought.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here.
Thank you, that brings us to citizens request.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes.
Move to suspend the rules to allow those outside the city boundaries to participate.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
Thank you, so that brings us to citizens comments, first up Carolyn Richardson. Carolyn Richardson? Carolyn Richardson has not come forward, we'll come back to her just in case. Next up, Ron L. Meredith, Martith?
Moretta.
Moretta.
Good evening mayors and members of the council, I've got more of an unrehearsed rant than a speech, but it's about the council proposals or the charter proposals. Most generally, when a politician asks to make changes to a city charter or something like that, it seldom really ever benefits the people. Somebody wants that done for a reason. One thing I'm going to call out in particular is question number three, and I hope the citizens of this city think long and hard about each and every council or proposed agenda change because there's a reason for doing that. What are they? They weren't very well described, I didn't think. But question number three, you might as well call it what it is, the city wants to sell Independence Power and Light, and they're looking for your approval. Now, I worked for that company for thirty-seven and a half years, over thirty of it I was a foreman. I know a lot of stuff that goes on in this city through Power and Light, even though maybe or may or not be the way it's supposed to happen. I can't understand a city getting rid of their cash cow. One thing people need to understand is that if this sells, it's not going to be bought by a group of citizens, it's going to be bought by a group of investors. Our investors are in business to make money. Take a look at the first few proposals in this agenda tonight. Power and Light's asking for millions of dollars, but they're not asking from it from the council, they're asking for approval. Power and Light is basically a self-funded entity, okay? It will cost the citizens, we do pay, but as they're near a non-for-profit organization, they're not making money on this. You sell this to an investor, and I work all around these United States, since I retired, I'm on call for about five or six different storm companies, and I go do storm damage assessment all over the United States, and I'm always working for investor-owned utilities, and you can't imagine how they rape their citizens. You will pay for this. Power and Light right now is the only thing that keeps the rate increases in this area at bay, because we are the lowest, like it or not. You sell this to an investor-owned outfit, and that's subject to change, because they're not going to come and ask you about permission to buy these things, they're just going to buy them, and guess who's going to pay for it? And remember, it's an investor-owned utility, that means somebody wants to make money on it. So, give these proposal changes a lot of thought when you go to vote, especially that one. As I said, the question number three might as be, might as well be called what it is, permission to sell Independence Power and Light. There's no benefit to this city to sell any other utility but that one. So, with that being said, I'm just leaving that as food for thought for the citizens and yourselves too. Thank you.
Yvonne Hall.
Mayor, up there at the city council, thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Yvonne Hall, my address is 117 West 20th Street in Kansas City, Missouri. I have worked with an organization on Little Blue Parkway in Independence for the past nineteen years, and I currently am the executive vice president overseeing several divisions of that company. Tonight, though, I'm here representing the Chamber of Commerce, and I want to speak of the chamber's support of the proposed charter amendments and the proposed police sales tax, both of which appear on the ballot tomorrow. I have the honor of serving as this year's chair of the board of the Independence Chamber, and have had the privilege of being a member of that organization for years. We are a chamber of over six hundred businesses, we are proud of our city, and we try hard to do our part to make Independence great. Attracting new businesses and retaining current business is just simply good business. It keeps sales tax revenue coming in, and that pays bills, not to mention the jobs that are created. The chamber applauds the city on moving forward thirteen months ago in naming a charter review committee. I personally know several on this committee, and quite frankly, the city could not have chosen better. They are dream citizens for any community. They put a lot of hard work and hours and put good updates on the ballot to bring the charter up to date. Forty years is a long time for a city charter to go unchanged. The updates put forward are good and sound, and they are an indication that of a city progressing and adapting to current times, and that's good business. In addition to the charter amendments, tomorrow's citizens will be asked to vote on a city sales tax of one-fourth of one percent, of which the funds will be used exclusively for the salaries and benefits of the Independence Police Department. The city also, or the chamber also applauds the city for quickly recognizing a salary deficit that if not addressed right away could cause officers to pursue employment in neighboring cities in the relative near future. Our city needs more police officers, not less, and they deserve to earn a competitive pay while providing citizens, while providing citizens and businesses, protecting the citizens and businesses of Independence. So, thank you, city council, for taking quick action by proposing the sales tax. As you can tell, the chamber, this Independence Chamber strongly supports both ballot initiatives. During our July board meeting, the board passed two resolutions, one in support of the charter amendments update, and the other in support of the police sales tax. Citizens will have the opportunity to vote on both tomorrow. The chamber encourages everyone to get out and vote, and we ask that you vote yes on the proposed charter amendments and the police sales tax. Thank you.
Sorry for butchering that up.
Good evening, members of the council, city manager Walker, Mr. Mayor. I'm here on behalf of turn over police Lodge One, I'm an executive board member, and I'm here speaking in favor of Proposition PD. To keep this fairly streamlined, it wasn't but less than a month ago, when this council had the forethought to pass our collective bargaining agreement, that was worked on very hard by our chief, the city manager, and the union as well, to ensure that we were able to compete competitively with these outside agencies and jurisdictions. Proposition PD is important to us at the lodge for multiple reasons, but not least of which is allowing us to remain competitive. Obviously, the funding that is estimated that will come through that proposition allows us to continue negotiations with the city in a method that allows us to stay at the top of the pyramid, so that we don't lose our officers. Right now, law enforcement nationwide is in dire straits when it comes to recruiting and retention. It has become a shell game of robbing Peter to pay Paul, agencies taking from one another, and it's being done through pay and benefit packages, that's the way that they're attracted over. Law enforcement nowadays trying to find people that are willing to step into these shoes, especially in the last, in the wake of the last five years to seven years, is very difficult. Now, you couple that with the fact that law enforcement used to be considered a job, you know, guys came in, it was something that had a pension, and it was something they could do for twenty years and call it a day. Law enforcement now is a profession, we are considered law enforcement professionals for a reason. Kind of put that in perspective, right now, as it stands, the American Medical Association estimated that current-serving physicians read somewhere between four to four and a half hours a week regarding their profession. They spend an additional nine to eleven hours in documentation and reporting of what they do, okay? A police officer serving in this city triples those numbers easily, and it's because it's required to remain professional, it's required to document the incidences that we have to document. Now, you take that, and you also look at, yeah, doctors make life and death decisions too, but they do it in a sterile environment, we do not. We do it in an ever-evolving and devolving, in many cases, situation, and we wear that, we wear that with pride. Allowing the sales tax to solidify our ability to continue our meaningful negotiations with the city in the future, and ensuring that we are allowed to continue to recruit and retain officers, is a paramount concern for not just the lodge, but also the city and the department. So, I'm here speaking in absurd support of this, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Marjan Breitenbach.
Hello, mayor, city council, and city manager. My name is Marjan Breitenbach and live in Lebanon, West Walnut. In the charter proposal, financial requirements are being changed from twenty-year bonds to thirty-year bonds. The change would allow the city to borrow more money. The current proposed budget is allocating twenty-one million dollars for debt services. This is an increase of over one million from last year. There are plans to tear down buildings and to build new buildings. My biggest concern is where are you planning on getting all the money? Last year, many people were shocked by their property tax increases. The fiasco is still being fought in and out of court. There is another new tax in the works for April. Now is not the time to add more burdens to people who are struggling to survive. Thank you.
Tom Waters.
Tom Waters, 1248 South McCoy. Mayor Rowland, Mayor Pro Tem Perkins, other members of the city council, thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight and speak. As you all know, for nearly a year, I sat with ten fellow citizens of the Charter Review Commission as we took up the tedious process of reviewing every word and paragraph of the charter of the city of Independence, and then making recommendations to you, the city council, for changes to that charter. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of voting yes on all five questions that will be on the ballot tomorrow. I'm not going to review each one, that's been done in many places and published in many places. Instead, I want to address the issues from a slightly different perspective. From what I've read and from what I've heard from those who oppose the ballot questions, the main concern are that the process was hurried, the changes are hard to understand, and that rights are being reduced for the citizens of this fine city. I respect those citizens and their opinions, but I also respectfully submit that a lack of education is no reason to vote no. The process of creating the commission and the process that followed.
Please.
Could not have been more democratic.
Mr. Waters.
Open and fair.
Just one second, please. Can we keep the ruckus to a minimum? We are having a very long meeting, quite a few speakers, and if you can't, hold yourself. Thank you, Mr. Waters.
Thank you. As you know, each council person appointed two members, the commission was comprised of a wide variety of citizens, they held open to the public, live, online, recorded meetings, had honest and tough conversation, used a variety of sources of expert information, and voted as a group to make the recommendations. Most importantly, the group had no preconceived expectations nor any influence or pressure of any kind to make those recommendations. I can't imagine that it could have been carried out in a more fair way. Citizens want more transparency, and this could not have been more transparent. At one of the first meetings, we discussed the process. The commission would meet, make recommendations to the city council, the city council then could accept all the recommendations, some, none, make any changes that they wanted, and then would submit them to a public vote. The voters would then decide whether to accept all, some, or none of the changes. At that moment, at that very first or second meeting, we had to decide whether to recommend the minimum changes necessary to make the ballot language easy and probably get an easy approval, or to do a more thorough job making the full changes necessary, but in the process making it more difficult to understand, more difficult to write the ballot language, and probably more difficult to get passed. We decided at that point, in order to do the job of the commission fully, especially since it had not been done for four decades, that we would recommend all of the changes that we felt necessary to bring the charter up to date, eliminate redundancies, comply with state law, and add some missing elements. The changes that are being recommended are extensive and do take time to understand. I again submit that a lack of education on the changes is no reason to vote no. A yes vote is also a vote for more expectations of our city government, and you can note that we make recommendations about enabling more citizen involvement, requiring the city to have a financial policy and an ethics policy. In conclusion, the charter needed much overdue updates, the process was fair, open, and thorough. The additions to the charter call for more citizens' input and expectations, not less. The Chamber of Commerce has endorsed, the examiner's endorsed, one of the original members of this 1961 Charter Commission has endorsed. Let's move the city forward, vote yes, and pass all five questions. Thank you.
Bob Swornson.
My name's Bob, Bob Swornson, 800 Southwest Powell Drive, Oak Grove, Missouri. I'm the immediate past president of the Independence Retirees Loggers Group. I'm here to speak on item 23 on the consent agenda. At the council meeting on July 15th, you approved a contract with Cigna for the 2025 post-65 retirees' health insurance. I spoke at that meeting and thanked the council and city staff for working together with our representatives. We believe that this contract provided the current benefits as stated in the RFP, and was by far the best proposal submitted by any provider. At no time did any of the three post-65 retirees that were on the board hear anything at the RFP meetings that would indicate anything else. We were even told by the city that we did not need to attend any more meetings because the post-65 portion was done. We had always believed that during the RFP meetings, that post-65 was completely separate from StayWell, as were the RFPs, and they, that were put on, that were put out for bids. This being said, it was brought to my attention that the vision part of the post-65 health insurance was being removed, even though it was being shown in the RFP as part of the coverage that was bid. I reached out to Jonathan from CBIZ for answers in regards to this last Thursday, and he set up a virtual meeting for last Friday at 8:00 a.m., which myself, Marla Kinsey, the vice president, Jonathan, and Bethany from HR were on the call. Jonathan asked me at that time if this was in regards to the vision issue for post-65, and I told him it was. He stated this issue came about because the RFP that had, that was selected by the StayWell Committee for Vision was IMED and not Cigna, which we currently have, and that was, and that was what had created the issue. I told him that I was under the impression that each RFP was separate, and at no time were any of the post-65 members told anything different, or were even made part of those choices. There are many things that need to be discussed in regards to this to find a fair solution. I need, along with my short speech here, I did have a conversation, Bethany from HR called me today, and we had about a thirty-minute discussion on the phone because she had heard I was going to speak tonight. And she explained to me a lot of things, and I'm not saying anything she explained to me wasn't probably true and accurate. She, I explained to her that I did not understand why this was occurring, and why we weren't made aware of this prior to July 15th. After the secrecy of the post-65, which we were sworn to, RFP was done, I went to all my members, and many of them attended the July 15th meeting here at the council, and I told them exactly what I was told by Jamie, who no longer is with the city, in the city, that the RFP for the post-65 was good, Cigna was going to be there, it contained everything that we currently had, it was the best proposal, and it was great. And on the thing that was given to us at those meetings, when they, we started the meetings, there was a thing given to us by CBIZ that showed the presentation of all four companies that were bidding the post-65 health insurance, and it showed what benefits they were offering, what the deductibles were, went through the whole thing. And on the proposal from Cigna that was given to us, and this is my first dealing with RFP, it said vision coverage. Why would I think that that wasn't part of it? I'm understanding more now where the problems had been with the vision coverage the last three years on fault of the city by talking to Bethany, but going into this, nobody ever told me. And I always talk about transparency, there was no transparency because we were told we didn't need to come to any more meetings because post-65 was done, so those three people from the committee were told they didn't need to attend anymore. So, we did not attend any meetings when the vision coverage was selected. We didn't vote on that because we were told it didn't have any impact, or we, it was implied it had no impact. So, what I'm asking the council to do for us today is, I would like to see that number 23 polled, and I'd like to see amendment made to it. An amendment made to delay the signing of the contract on the vision for at least a couple of weeks, so I can have at least time to meet with the city manager and have discussions with Cigna, and find out why this happened, the way it happened, and if there's anything else that can be done, or maybe we have to do what's going to be done tonight, but I'd like to at least have that information so I can go back to my membership and explain why we are where we are today, and why it's different than it was on July 15th when I stood here in front of this council. I thank you for your time, and I would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Marla Kinsey.
Good evening, my name is Marla Kinsey, my address is 25605 Southwest Wyatt Road, Blue Springs, Missouri. Mayor, city council, and attendees, thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. I serve as the vice president of the Independence Loggers Retirement Group, and have been one of the three members serving on the committee for the post-65 health contracts. I am speaking tonight regarding item 23 on the consent agenda. I am requesting that the city council amend this item to exclude the approval of the contract for vision coverage with IMED, to allow the city and the committee additional time to review details, which we were not made aware of until Friday, August 2nd, 2025. We believe this amendment will allow the city and post-65 committee members the additional time necessary to resolve this issue. Our request should have no additional financial impact on the city, that's not what we're about. We believe this action is warranted to resolve the discrepancies in the original presentations. I want to thank you for this consideration.
Jason White.
Jason White, 1024 South Forest, Independence, Missouri. I'll be briefer than normal because Mr. Waters covered a lot of it, but I'd like to add on to one of his comments about the charter, that I appreciated the city's extra effort to answer questions. People in the community have had questions, they've raised them. The other day, I got in the mail a really long letter from the city, and I appreciated that because it went into detail answering many of those questions, and I hope many of my neighbors took the opportunity to dig through that and read it. If they've still got questions, all you got to do, and if you know me, I'm not the most technologically literate, but you go to the city website, in the upper left-hand corner, you just hit that little link up there, and it takes you to the current charter, the proposed charter, the red line version, and then for people like me, a nice FAQ that sort of boils things down. There's a lot of information out there, if they haven't had a chance to dig through it, they've still got time before they may vote tomorrow. Question was raised about IPL. I'd encourage people, if they've got a question, and that's the issue that's important to them, to, A, remember about a month and a half ago, before you put this on the ballot, you all voted a change to the draft charter, and it says that before anybody could consider selling it, you got to go to a vote of the public. That's not in the current charter, that's in the proposed charter. Don't take my word for it, go to the city website, go to that little link in the upper left-hand corner, and hit that little button, and you can read it yourself. So, if that's the issue that drives you, you want to make sure your voice is heard in a decision around IPL, you really want to vote for these charter changes. Thank you very much for the added information, I think you've gone above and beyond in trying to engage with the community with good information, and I hope we vote it through tomorrow. Thank you.
Mike Veat.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Michael Veat, and I am the chair of the city's StayWell Healthcare Committee. I stand in front of you this evening to speak about the RFP process that has taken place since February for healthcare benefits. The city is currently under a five-year contract with Cigna to provide medical, pharmacy, dental, and vision benefits through the end of 2024. Our team consisting of representatives from StayWell Committee, CBIZ, and HR spent countless hours poring over the information provided to make the best possible recommendations for the city and the members. As you recall from the study session on July 22nd, we covered these recommendations in depth. I am here tonight to provide a recap of that presentation. In that presentation, you noticed that the RFP committee made some changes. Those changes are reflective of what is best for everyone involved, and yes, that includes the city perspective and the employees. I will start with the easy ones. The committee has recommended staying with UMB to provide health savings accounts due to a zero cost incurred by the city and other bidders, all changing, all charging a fee for their programs. When we looked at the flexible spending account, we really leaned on our human resources teams, they're the ones that deal with this more than we do. It was a unanimous decision to change providers and move to MetLife. With this change, there was a fifty percent savings from our current provider with little to no disruption to the members. As we shift gears, we start to look at the rest of the benefits, we start with vision. The committee recommended changing carriers from Cigna to IMED. This will provide a larger network of providers, as well as a savings of roughly $150,000. The next piece we reviewed was dental. Once again, the committee made the decision to change vendors to move to MetLife. With this change, we'll see an estimated savings of $110,000 in a larger network. Well, in the grand scheme of things, this amount of money is not- Well, in the grand scheme of things, this amount of money is not over the top when we talk about healthcare, but what this is more reflective of is the committee doing our due diligence to cut costs without cutting benefits. The final piece of the puzzle are the big ones, medical and pharmacy. We elected to keep these programs bundled together as they coincide with each other so much. By doing this, it allows the carrier to work hand-in-hand within their own system to provide greater discounts and faster rebates back to the plan. Currently, the committee is recommending staying with our current provider, Cigna, for both medical and pharmacy. This recommendation comes with an estimated savings of one point eight million dollars with no changes to planned benefits or disruption of the members. This decision was the hardest piece to decide on due to the bid that came in from Blue Cross of Kansas City. On paper, they estimated a larger savings, but the committee felt that it was not necessarily an accurate reflection of the plan. If the decision was made to change carriers, we would have to endure a fundamental change to our healthcare program that we have worked extremely hard with city administration to bring back to life. A few examples of this hard work are educating the members on the difference between a PPO-embedded plan and a high-deductible non-embedded plan, which really should be renamed to a consumer-driven We have built a Local Plus network to provide deeper discounts to the plan, savings to the members, and to keep our money right here in Independence, along with our partnership with HCA Hospital, which includes CenterPoint. If we did recommend changing carriers to Blue Cross of Kansas City, it would mean all of the members on Local Plus would have to change everything regarding their medical providers, as HCA would not be in the select network through Blue Cross of Kansas City, which would be potentially a cost increase for the members and the city. Currently, we have programs running in the background with Cigna that help control costs, provide benefits to the members, and we felt that the savings with Blue Cross of Kansas City would be less than Cigna after we implemented these same programs. The final example is that we have successfully shown a turning point in the Staywell Healthcare Fund. As of May one, two thousand and twenty-three, the Staywell Fund balance was negative four hundred thousand dollars, and as of May one, two thousand and twenty-four, the Staywell Fund balance was one point six million dollars. That is a two million dollar swing in one year. In conclusion, I'd like to take a moment to thank the individuals for all their hard work in this process. I would like to thank Cindy Colt, Erin Caspul, Bethany Dickey, Mike Jackson, our CBiz team, our retirees, and as well as our city manager, Zach Walker, for trusting in this group to make strong recommendations that look in the best interest of all parties involved. Mayor and City Council members, I thank you for your time and would appreciate your support on Consent Agenda Item Twenty-three tonight. Thank you.
Lynn Baker?
Good evening. I'm Lynn Baker. I live at one nine one one six East Nineteenth Street Court South. Yes, that's an Independence address, Independence, Missouri, six four oh five seven. There are three things I want to talk about tonight, briefly. One is the police tax. The police enforce the law, which is the basis of maintaining positive behavior in our community. If any of you have noticed, there has been a creeping in of lawlessness into the western part of Independence. There was damage done at the Chamber Building last week, where the Ring camera, phone, they were pulled off the door, and other damage was done around our business, the Chambers Building. So I'm thanking you for bringing it to the vote of the people, and I encourage people to remember that this is our city and we must protect it. Secondly, I am for the charter review. Sir, I am respectfully disagreeing because I've been at several meetings. The last meeting I was at was here in this very room when we had a study session two weeks ago, and it was said that the Independence Power and Light would not be changed until it was voted on by the people, the citizens of this community. And I do not understand why there's such opposition. Maybe there's great mistrust of government, but there's been a lot of diligence done on this. And number three, thank you, thank you, thank you. As a member of the Tourism Commission, I'm so appreciative of moving ahead so Independence can become all that we want it to be. I came here in nineteen seventy-one to teach at Palmer Junior High. I am not from here, but I've come to love this community. We are in competition. The folks of this is letting you need to know. Lee Summit, Blue Springs, we are in competition for not only population, but tourism, and we have to do better than we've been doing because I want the city to survive and thrive and become a wonderful place for not only our citizens, but our visitors. Thank you.
One more time, Caroline Richardson? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you, everyone, for coming up to speak. This brings us to the presentation resolutions. Because I screwed it up last time, here's how we're going to do it. We're going to read and vote on the resolution. The city clerk will read the full resolution. Mr. Hilt, you'll come up. I'll give you the I-Star Award. I can't give you the full resolution because the mayor has not signed it yet. I'll get it to you. So that's how we're going to go. Madam City Clerk.
Resolution twenty-four seven forty-two, a resolution recognizing Breton Hilt Treatment Plant Operator for the Municipal Services Department as the I-Star Award recipient for August two thousand and twenty-four. Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Whereas the service-
Sorry, it's muted. Yes.
Gotcha. Whereas the Service Recognition Program recognizes outstanding performance and exemplary acts of service by employees of the City of Independence, and whereas an employee committee selects the I-Star Independent Service and Teamwork Above Responsibilities Award recipient for exhibiting the qualities and ideals that best represent public service, and whereas the Service Recognition Committee has selected Breton Hilt Treatment Plant Operator with Municipal Services Department as the I-Star Award recipient for August two thousand and twenty-four. Now, common therefore, be it resolved by the City of Independence, the Council of the City of Independence, Missouri, as follows. The City Council of the City of Independence, Missouri, joins in recognizing Breton Hilt as the City of Independence I-Star Award recipient for August two thousand and twenty-four. Passes today.
That brings us to Consent Agenda.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Councilman Fears?
Make a motion to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Does any of the council members like to pull any items for discussion?
I would like to pull item number eleven.
Any others to be pulled? Hearing none.
Wait, Mayor Protem?
Sorry.
Can I pull twenty?
Yes.
And number twenty-three?
Any others?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Twenty-four seven five three.
Any others? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll minus those items, please.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Ken. You need to be on camera when you do an official vote.
Okay, can you see me now?
I can, thank you. And your vote is?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion. Carries passes. Councilman Fears, item number eleven.
Item number eleven is a request for an approval of a, I'm going to get this wrong, probably, Smeal one hundred-foot mid-mount platform demo fire truck for a million, almost nine hundred thousand dollars. And I just didn't want to let this pass without Mr. City Manager, without raising this and just asking for benefit of the citizens to help us understand a little bit more about what this device is and how important it is for us, and is probably, to my knowledge at least, the most we've ever spent on one fire apparatus, and so I just wanted to ask for a little more information on that.
Would be glad to, and for the first time, I am pleased to welcome and introduce Chief Jimmy Short, Jimmy Short. My bad, chief. Jimmy Walker.
He meant I'm not as tall as Chief Short.
That's right. That's right.
That might be a nickname. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So I can speak to our new fire truck purchase. First off, we are extremely lucky to have had this opportunity to purchase this fire truck. We are saving a tremendous amount of money. We had budgeted two point two million dollars for the purchase of a new aerial ladder, which the city has three aerials, two platforms, one quint in our city. So these fire trucks are like bullets to police officers. When you need them, they're extremely important to have. We came upon a deal that we could secure a fire truck instead of waiting three years to build out a ladder truck for two point two million dollars. We found a demo model that is brand-new, that we can purchase for the one point eight million dollar range. So if we're lucky and we can find some wiggle room with our allotted budgeted money, we can probably purchase two fire trucks this year for the price of one. So I'm really excited about that. This ladder truck will be a midship-mount, one hundred-foot aerial platform that will be housed at Station One to replace an aged vehicle that is requiring numerous maintenance costs currently, so we'll be saving money on that end, too. So any questions about this wonderful fire truck that we're going to purchase? And it's beautiful, by the way. I'm telling you what.
Is it red?
Oh, it's going to be red. It's gonna, yeah, and anybody who wants to go for a ride in the basket, just call me and we'll get you. I said, then, anyways.
Any further conversations or a question for the chief?
Mr. Mayor Protem, move for approval.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Mayor Rowland, can you hear us?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
There you go. Thank you. Item number eleven passes. Councilwoman Wiley, number twenty.
To inquire of the city manager?
Please.
So number twenty is three million for line clearing and tree trimming, and I was hoping that you could talk to everyone about how important that is, especially in light of the last week that we had in Independence.
Yes, councilwoman and members of the council, as councilmember Wiley said, with the storms that rolled through Independence last week, as we know, over seven thousand of our customers were without power, and obviously, that's very disruptive to everybody when that happens. Where we are fortunate is in that it was not more people that were impacted by that, and a large part of that has to be attributed to IPL's longstanding best practice of the preventative maintenance program that they do. You may recall, just about a year ago, the council approved technology that's allowing Independence Power and Light to use artificial intelligence to search treetops and figure out areas that may be more prone to storm damage, so we can be very purposeful about where we are trimming. It makes sense for us. I had a conversation with our IPL director today to utilize this as a contractual service because this is a seasonal activity. These are employees that we can flex as needed, either scale up after a storm like just happened or scale back down after the storm activities are done. So it gives us that flexibility without carrying that overhead associated with full-time employees, but it really comes in handy with what we saw just this past weekend with those storms and making sure we're able to minimize the disruption to our customers.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll? Motion for approval, please.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been approved and seconded. City Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Number twenty passes. Councilwoman McCandless, number twenty-three.
Thank you. To inquire of the city manager? I understand the complexity that goes into managing the insurance with all of its moving parts and many people having an opinion. We've been asked tonight to put this on hold. Does it have impact on us? Should we delay since we've already committed to the contracts by our previous action? Just curious about that.
My, the caution I would issue is that as we begin our open enrollment and process for our eleven hundred employees and nine hundred-plus or so individuals in retirement covered by our insurance is making sure that process runs as smoothly as possible. This will be the first year that we're migrating to the new Dayforce software platform, so that's going to be unknown to us. That process has been choppy in the past, and that's not good for anybody when that happens. We can always use an abundance of time to make sure that process goes as smoothly as possible, so that, as I sit here tonight, that would be the front-of-mind concern that I would have.
And we received a recommendation from the Chair of the Staywell Committee, so I'll be voting in favor of this, so thank you very much. Move approval of item number twenty-three.
Second.
Been seconded. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll, please.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Number twenty-three passes. That brings us to the regular agenda. Oh, sorry. Councilman Bryce Stewart. Number eleven?
No, twenty-four dash seven five three.
Yep, sorry. Please proceed.
I'll make a motion for approval on twenty-four dash seven five three.
Second.
Motion's been approved.
So, Mr. City Manager, can you give an overview of this, why this is being asked for?
Yes, Councilmember Stewart and members of the council, you may recall a few weeks ago, consultant who's been working with the city the last several months, Karen Hibbard, presented to the council. She'd come in to evaluate the city's tourism function. Several years ago, tourism was moved from being a department of the city to a division of the Parks Recreation and then Tourism Department. That has worked admirably, but we were wanting to see if there might be a better way to deliver that service and maximize the city's historic assets, our convention and visitor services, our hotels that populate the area, and make sure we put Independence on the greatest stage we can, particularly from an economic engine standpoint. As Ms. Hibbard shared at that meeting, it was her recommendation that we look at making tourism its own standalone entity again, so the resolution tonight would just give the direction of the council to me that I go further refine some of those models. those models, in concert with Ms. Hibbard, further refine if that is a division, Department of the City, or if we're looking at a standalone 501(c)(3) operation akin to what several of our peer communities are doing as well. So again, this would mostly just be a policy statement from the council, providing the direction to further refine that concept and bring additional proposals to the council for your consideration.
Why was tourism actually merged with parks, I believe, in 2014?
To the best of my knowledge, and I would like to clarify that I was serving as the city's management analyst at that time. But the understanding that I had was after the city tourism director at that time left for another position, this was seen as a cost-saving measure to capture economies of scale, there being some common overlap with those departments, and looking to fill that with a division manager level salary instead of a department director salary. But again, I will confess that's some secondhand understanding.
So if this were to pass tonight, it's possible that we would have to go back and hire a director and staff and go along with it?
Potentially, yes, sir.
Potentially, okay. I have some concerns about that, because right now, we have tourist sites, you know, like the Vale Mansion in Bingham that aren't fully funded now. So if we're gonna start hiring staff, I, I don't know, I just have some concerns about it. And then you're, you know, she recommended, I'm sorry, Ms. Hibbard, you know, was, she said, you know, in the city, she was from Manhattan, that 65% would go to the convention and visitor bureau and 35% back to the city. Well, I appreciated what, you know, all she was saying. She was from Manhattan, and I don't know if she was comparing us to Manhattan, but you know, they have, they're, they're completely different. They have a university, you know, they, Fort Riley's really close to there. They have a lake there that's like the second largest in Kansas. So I think, I don't know, I just have some skepticism about this. But anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? Councilman Fears?
Mr. City Manager, just a question, make sure I'm understanding. All this is doing is giving you direction to further look into this and then make recommendations back to us, correct?
Yes. If this didn't pass, I would assume the council's content with tourism being a division of Parks and Recreation, and we would not expend any further effort working on that. If it were to pass, I would understand the council would be interested in further exploration, and we would work on building some potential models for further consideration.
So I, for one, am of the opinion that we need to look at this issue more, more detailed, and so I'll be voting in favor of this.
Any other inquiries, questions? I just have a one quick comment. I think it's time to take a different look and to see what type of convention bureau that we may be able to have visitor bureau, convention bureau, do things a little bit different, out of the box, that we haven't done before. We have a great Truman Library here. We have great historic sites. And how do we capitalize that on that is something that we can always look. So bringing this forward for more consideration is just be the reason why I'd be voting for this for approval. Hearing no more discussion. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
No.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
24-753 passes. Now, that brings us to our regular agenda. That brings us to public hearings.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Councilman Fears?
In advance of, of this public hearing and, and the ordinance, I make a motion to amend this ordinance to clarify that 306 West Maple is included in the rezoning request.
I second.
We have a motion and a second for the clarification. Is there any questions?
My understanding, Mr. Mayor Protem, is that there's, the way that it was originally written, that there was just some uncertainty that it applied to also 306 West Maple. And so that's the reason for the clarification.
That's correct. I believe our city councillor gave, emailed everyone a little bit of a heads-up in what the discussion would be this evening. If there's no further discussion on the amendment, Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll on the amendment?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to the public hearing. New information only. Mr. Arroyo.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This rezoning plan unit development, or PUD, was considered by Planning Commission on June 11th of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. This is a rezoning to go from C2 to C2 PUD, to allow Polly's Pop, which is at 300, 306, and 315 West Maple, to accommodate their increased scope of production, including just some additional diet soda flavors and bottled water and some, and a barbecue sauce. This PUD will allow limited manufacturing and warehousing at their current location. I have no new information to provide.
Thank you. That brings us to 24-064, and this will be read as amended. Madam City Clerk?
An ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2 General Commercial to C2 PUD, General Commercial Plan Unit Development, and a preliminary, preliminary development plan for the properties located at 300, and 315, and 306, did we put that in there? Okay. West Maple Avenue, second reading.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. That brings us to our second reading, 24-065. Madam City Clerk, please.
An ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring general utility easements for the East Haidel Burger Road Bridge Replacement Project, Project Number 112203, authorizing the negotiation in eminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project. Second reading.
Any conversation?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Councilman Stewart?
Mr. City Manager, this Haidelberg Road Bridge is actually in District Number 2, in very east Independence. And I know I have some constituents out there that are happy to see this go on an agenda, but if it passes tonight, which hopefully it will, what, when can we look to see this thing open, possibly?
This tonight is gonna give us some more of the ability to move forward with that project. It's a little difficult to pinpoint the timeframe, but I will tell you, given the fact that this is creating at least a six-minute reroute for people, which obviously becomes a problem when you're looking at public safety issues, this is at or near the top of the list of projects we're planning to tackle.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. This brings us to the first readings. The first two readings will be read as an emergency, which means they will have two readings. Yes, ma'am. Madam City Clerk, please, 24-066.
24-066, first reading, an ordinance approving an emergency purchase order to Shin Young Electric Company, LTD, in the amount of $1,446,710 for the single-phase and three-phase pad-mounted transformers for IPL, and declaring an emergency. Five affirmative votes required to approve. First reading. Second reading. An ordinance approving an emergency purchase order to Shin Young Electric Company, LTD, in the amount of $1,446,710 for single-phase and three-phase pad-mounted transformers for IPL, and declaring an emergency. Five affirmative votes required to approve. Second reading.
Any conversation, discussion? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. 24-067. Madam City Clerk?
24-067, first reading, an ordinance finding, finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring general utility easements, temporary access easements, and temporary construction easements for the Rock Creek Watershed CMP repair replacement, CIP project, Project Number 132402, authorizing the negotiation and eminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project, and declaring an emergency. Five affirmative votes required. First reading. Second reading. An ordinance finding, 24-067, second reading, sorry. An ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring general utility easements, temporary access easements, and temporary construction easements for the Rock Creek Watershed CMP Repair and Replacement CIP project, Project Number 132402, authorizing the negotiation and imminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project, and declaring an emergency. Five affirmative votes required to approve in the second reading.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Councilman Fears?
To, question for the city manager. Just, I knew what the reason for the emergency on the first one was. I, just, can you clarify the reason for the emergency on this one?
Yeah, would be glad to, Councilmember Fears and members of the council. This item is being funded through the federal American Rescue Plan Act dollars that were appropriated a few years ago during the COVID-19 pandemic. Those dollars have to be encumbered by December 31st of this year. This project has a lot of complications, so it took some time to get to this point. But in order for us to try to make up two weeks on our timeline and get everything locked down before the 31st of December, we were hoping to get that emergency approval tonight.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Now, we have the rest of our first readings. Madam City Clerk?
24-068, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of the 24 Midwest High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Memorandum of Understanding for the Kansas City Overland Park DEA Tax Force Initiative and relative documents with the Kansas Bureau of Investigation for a grant award in the amount of $163,362, making the necessary appropriations, authorizing future change orders for the additional funding and/or time extensions, and authorizing certain future appropriations. First reading. 24-069, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the City Planning, of the City Code pertaining to police facilities. First reading. 24-070, an ordinance amending the United Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the City Code pertaining to home-based businesses. First reading. 24-071, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the City Code pertaining to small-box discount tobacco convenience and liquor stores. First reading. 24-072, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the City Code pertaining to recreation, recreational vehicle parts. First reading. 24-073, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2 General Commercial to R6 Single-Family Residential for the property at 1301 South Nolan Road. First reading. 24-074, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R1 Single-Family Residential Estate to R6 Single-Family Residential for a portion of the property at 19307 East Hulk Road. First reading. 24-075, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2 General Commercial to District C2 PUD, General Commercial Plan Unit Development, and approving a preliminary development plan for the property located at 155 South Nolan Road. First reading. 24-076, an ordinance approving a special-use permit to operate a group home for transitional housing at 801 West 23rd Street in Independence, Missouri. Valid legal protest filed. Five affirmative votes required to approve. First reading. 24-077, an ordinance approving rezoning from District C2 General Commercial and C1 Neighborhood Commercial to C2 General Commercial for the property at 13001 East Highway 40. First reading. 24-078, an ordinance amending Article 5 of Chapter 19 of the City Code enacting a maximum number of refuse collection establishments operating in the city. First reading. 24-079, an ordinance approving a final plat for behavioral health in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri. First reading. 24-080, an ordinance approving a final plat for Timber Creek Ranch, third plat in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri. First reading. 24-081, an ordinance approving a final plat for the Timber Creek Ranch, fourth plat in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri. First reading. 24-082, an ordinance vacating an existing unconstructed right-of-way being part of St. Clair Park on and across lots 240 to 248, a subdivision in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri. First reading. 24-083, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Public Transit Operating Assistant Grant in the amount of $141,364 for operating expenses associated with transit service for the period of July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025, and making the necessary appropriations. First reading. 24-084, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept a grant from Mid-America Regional Council in the amount of $88,007 for the city senior adult nutrition site program for fiscal year 2024, 2025, and execute the amended, amendment Community Center Services Agreement, making the necessary appropriations, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions, and authorizing certain future appropriations.
Good job. So that brings us to, it's like you haven't skipped a beat. Appreciate that. That'll bring us to the council member comments. I'll start with Councilman Stewart.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilman Fears?
Mr. Mayor Protem, thank you. It's been three weeks now since we met in the last council meeting, and during that time, it's been a busy time. We did have the State of the City address at the Chamber of Commerce that the mayor shared in, and shared with us. And we, we met, the Independence Economic Development Partnership met a couple weeks ago. And in that meeting, we had a presentation relative to our business license survey. So there's a survey that the, the chamber has done on business licensing and the process for that. I just want to, it's, there weren't, wasn't a tremendous response to that survey. So I would just encourage our business owners, especially those that have been through the building permit and the licensing process recently, to go out and complete that survey. We're still, it's still open, and we'd like to get more response on that. But it is helpful. And, you know, the, the goal here really is to hear from our business owners, to understand how we, as a city, can better streamline the process of licensing and permitting and, and doing that work. In addition to that, we commissioned five new police officers. We said goodbye to Chief Lous, who led the, the Fire Department for about a year, and we appreciated that. We also met and discussed the police campus with the architectural firm, working on that. We also met and discussed the police campus with the architectural firm, working on that in an effort to consider what all should be on the GO bond proposal that we intend to bring to the citizens next year. And so we heard a lot of good information, but there's more to, to come on that. And last but not least, I'd like to talk about an important vote tomorrow. First, regardless of the outcome of the vote tomorrow, I want to thank the Charter Review Committee for their work for over thirteen months, for hundreds of hours. It's much appreciated regardless of what happens tomorrow. Two weeks ago, we held a second open house in an effort to help our citizens be informed regarding the proposed charter changes. I personally knocked on a number of doors about this, and I hope that, and I do know that there is some confusion about these questions that are on the charter. I'd first like to just assure that our citizens, that there's no effort on the part of the city council to sneak anything by them, the citizens, or remove any rights or benefits that they have in, in this effort. This is an update to a charter which is important. Just tonight, we heard a citizen state that we're asking the citizens to sell IPL. Nothing could be farther from the truth in these questions. That's just not accurate statement. Actually, if you read that question, the opposite is true. The question states that, that if this is approved, the city utilities will not be sold unless the citizens vote to do so. We also sent out information recently that registered voters should have received in the mail in our effort to help our voters understand what we, as a council, have recommended. And, and so all of that has been an effort to try to help our citizens understand the charter review questions. We'll also talk, or vote tomorrow. Our voters will consider whether to support our police department with an additional quarter cent sales tax. So important things on the ballot. In closing, I just would encourage our voters to be informed about the changes we're recommending to the charter and come out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vought?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. A couple of weeks ago, I had the privilege of attending alongside officers of the Independence Police Community Engagement Department, Community Services League, Comprehensive Mental Health, Heartland Center for Behavioral Change, and ARCH. They conducted an outreach and an enforcement day at the Nolan Fashion Square on Forty Highway. Officers thoroughly checked each building for any occupants and had the resources on-site for those seeking assistance while also there to enforce city ordinances and make arrests if necessary. On this particular day, though, no one was inside. However, positive measures are being implemented to address the homeless situation at this property. It's not a good place for people to be going inside to seek shelter. It was just really sad and shocking to see the inside of all of those buildings. Every single one of them is just not very good. But I think one very encouraging thing for me was seeing the various outreach organizations collaborating, and they each brought their own unique expertise to help those that wanted it. So that was just, that was very encouraging to see them all working together to help these people, and I think they're going to work with that in other locations as well. But there is some interest in this location, so I am hopeful, and I just, I am hopeful that soon we will see some positive change and revitalization at, in that area. And also, yes, tomorrow's election day, so make sure your voice is heard by participating. That's all.
Councilwoman Wiley?
Tomorrow is a big day, and I do encourage everyone to vote, and it's still time to go online and read about everything that we're voting on. It's a very long ballot tomorrow. I just want to remind everyone that tomorrow evening is the National Night Out, which is a program that our police officers are putting on at the Independence Center parking lot. There's a opening kickoff at six PM, and then they're doing a motors demonstration. You get to see the K nine demonstration, drone demonstration, and then at nine PM, there's a fire dance. So I will be there, I'm very excited about this, and it's open to the public, so come and join us tomorrow night. Thanks.
Councilwoman McCandless?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I had the privilege of going to visit the Salvation Army. They have done a big revision of their site. Salvation Army takes homeless families with children. They had only been able to accommodate nine families. They've done a remodel that allows for individual units, they can take up to sixteen. I would anticipate they will be full as soon as they are accepting families, but I'm delighted by the changes. I think it's going to serve, serve the city well. I wanted to send my appreciation to the Southwest Independence Community Group. We had our community meeting and toured the police station so they could see firsthand some of the areas of decay in that building, and they are substantial. Special thank you to Deputy Chief Sumstead, who made that possible. I know that we're going to be looking for other opportunities for community groups to be able to see the state of that building because we do have important decisions to make. I want to second what Councilmember Fears said about the thoughtfulness in the design process for a justice center. A lot of attention to durability, to the function of the ability, of the building, about cross-utilization of that building, so how do you use it for emergency events or for community events, and to support the work of the police department, but also a lot of attention to cost control. What can we do to keep the cost of that design and building down because, using those taxpayer dollars as wisely as we can, and making sure that this building lasts as long as possible? And then we, and we were delighted to welcome the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce to Drum Farm for their annual golf tournament and be there to tell them that we appreciate their business. The last thing I want to talk about, excuse me, I'm, I'm sure that you've heard about the terrible death of the young boy at Independence Towers, and we, as a council, offer our condolences to that extended family, to the neighbors and residents of that building. And while there are ongoing police and social service investigations, there are certainly issues that we, as a city, need to consider. We need to be sure that apartments in our city are safe and habitable because health and safety are core city functions. I know that we have an online reporting process, but is that the best way for residents to be able to report their concerns? Are there other options? What process is there for us to work with landlords? How do you inspect multi-unit dwellings where there are shared amenities like elevators and shared air conditioning and shared hot water systems? Do we have adequate inspection capacity for that? And I, I know that there are tools that the city has to affect improvements when deficits are found, but the last thing we want is to displace eighty families to get those things fixed. Are there opportunities we have to work with landlords to remediate those deficiencies where we don't have to displace people? So I'm going to ask the city manager to bring us at least some reflections, some overview, some recommendations. I know that the national codes are, have been released for their update. We're in the process of reviewing some of our codes, what have surrounding communities done to address the needs of both the residents and balance those with the needs of landlords, so hoping that we can have a city study session to be able to address some of those concerns. Thank you.
We will, we will get after that.
Thank you. Mayor Rowland?
Everyone did a great job tonight talking about all the items, so well done. But I, again, Councilwoman Wiley, talking about the National Night Out for IPD tomorrow night, I think that's very important. It'll be a great evening for everyone. And also, thank you, Councilmember McCandless, talking about Independence Towers. Second that, and I know all of our colleagues do with regards to, let's work on that, let's find a solution that makes a humane, inhabitable, inhabitable building for these folks who live there. And so, Councilmember McCandless, thank you for your words, well taken, and as a body, let's work together to address that concern for those members of that community. And with that, Mayor Protem, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. That brings it to me. So it has been about three weeks or so since we've met formally, along with our, our PD recruits that we sworn in. We also had, I believe, three firefighters that were sworn in and a couple promotions there, so I don't know if I'm just getting older or our department's getting younger, so, I mean, we've got a lot of young men and women on both, both sides there. Thank you for that. Also, you know, I, we had a situation, I think everybody heard, a couple of weeks ago regarding Microsoft and some of the hiccups that went through there globally with, with that upgrade to those systems, which kind of led me to think, you know, we really don't tout our IT department as much as we should with Jason Newkirk and his team, that it's one of those very unsexy things that nobody sees behind the scenes, but it's one of those areas that we have got to have our men and women there on point. So a big thank you to them, Mr. City Manager, for, for keeping our stuff as going as strong as, as they can for, for what we have. And two, I would like to give a big kudos to our, our and your leadership team. You were on vacation last week, much needed and appreciated, I'm sure, to get a break from here. Our leadership team, our assistant city manager, who is the acting city manager at the time, her team stepped up. Big news break, week, a lot of heavy things, power outages, Hallmark, all kinds of stuff that was going on last week. So thank you for your team to step up and keep things moving under your absence. DeeDee, you didn't miss a beat, so thank you for coming back. For those who don't know, DeeDee was our city clerk there for a little bit when we did not have one officially working for the city, so you came in and you filled in perfectly. So that was great, thank you. Mr. City Manager, anything tonight?
I will briefly remind folks, and big agenda tonight, lot that was accomplished. One of the things that was passed on the consent agenda was the formation of a Citizens' General Obligation Bond Advisory Committee. A lot of conversation tonight about that Police Justice Center and the design committee work that the council attended last week. A big part of what's envisioned in that general obligation bond, of course, being that Justice Center campus, but many other needs that have been long deferred in this community as well. So this group, identified by the council, twenty-one citizens, that will begin evaluating all of our many needs, the opportunities to potentially fund those, what that would mean in terms of financial impact to our community, and look forward to their recommendations coming before the council soon for your consideration. So thank you for your approval of that item tonight. Mr. Mayor Protem, I have nothing else.
Good point, thank you very much. We had a very big agenda, a lot of speakers, thank you for coming to speak, a lot of first readings, and we were out of here in an hour and a half. You're welcome, this meeting's adjourned.